He's talking about it on Main Street. I did just courtesy of saying that.
Give him a permit and go for it.
Everybody ready?
Ready.
Like to call to order the Bucksport Town Council meeting for November 10th, 2016. Road call please, Kathy.
Joseph York.
Here.
Paul Radd.
Here.
David Key, Ashley, David Key.
Yeah.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Dobbins.
Here.
Arthur Thomas.
Here.
Okay, item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. Rich.
Thank you. I had the opportunity today to attend the Down East Acadia Regional Tourism and accept an award on behalf of Wednesday on Main for the 2016 Innovation and Creativity Award, which was presented to Paula Key and the Wednesday on Main. I got a message from Paula who said that she would like to pass this on to the council and have the plaque hung up here at the town office. So if I may, I'd like to bring this around for all of you. She had a little speech, if that's all right. As most of you know, the Verso Paper Mill closed in December 2014, ending the lifestyle Bucksport had enjoyed since the early 1930s. It was not a surprise, but it was a galvanizing moment for the community. We now had license to fly or sink. We flew. The Wednesday on Main event program was implemented early in 2015 with its first event on June 15th. The mission is simple: offer a live event, music, dance, film, food, and more, on Bucksport's Main Street every Wednesday evening of the summer to bring local, area, and out-of-state visitors to town and encourage them to visit and support local businesses and restaurants. The program was initially awarded a grant from the Maine Community Foundation and secured additional funding from local financial institutions as well as the town of Bucksport. Performers were engaged, advertised purchase, a website created, promotional materials distributed, and social media utilized, and the first season went well, earning substantial funds that were dedicated to the next year's program. The 2016 season was underwritten entirely by Darlings of Bangor and enjoyed good attendance and generated considerable traffic for Bucksport businesses, and again was a financial success. Main Street has in 2016 seen the addition of a new restaurant, a new gift shop, and a nearly 9,000-square-foot art facility that houses education, retail, and gallery and event space. Wednesday on Main is one of several ongoing volunteer efforts and programs that enhance opportunities for downtown revitalization and which have put Bucksport on the mid-coast cultural events map. The community is actively engaged as much as possible in the repurposing of the mill property once demolition of the mill is completed. The Economic Development Department is tireless in their efforts on behalf of local business and residents. This good work raises the town's visibility and highlights the qualities that make Bucksport a desirable location for business development and a quality of life that is unique today. The spirit, energy, and commitment to take Bucksport into its next life is abundant, and Wednesday on Main plans to be a part of it for years to come. Thank you.
I'd also like to, at this time, take the opportunity to thank our town clerk and all the people that worked the election this year. It went very smoothly. We had a high turnout. We registered hundreds of new voters. It was very successful. People came in and didn't have to stand in lines for long periods of time, even the people of new registrations. So thank you, Kathy, and all the people that worked with you at the voting booth. Item four is consider minutes of previous meetings. I don't believe we have any. Okay. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. First one being a letter from Friends of Silver Lake in reference to the planning board decision on cemetery expansions.
This item and the next were two letters that... The first one was directed to planning board members but copied to me, and I'm sharing it with the council in regard to a decision that they rendered for the expansion of the cemetery near Silver Lake. The second is in regard to the water system, the town's water system, and what's going on with that. As to the first one, I've spoken with our code officer in regard to this, and it's my understanding, Jeff, that there weren't specifics cited by them during this process. This is an after-the-fact discussion in regard to the...
You mean the content of the letter?
Yes.
Right. They mentioned that they felt that the planning board's approval of the cemetery expansion would not be in the best interest of the town's water supply, but they didn't specify what they meant by that. There's no details, there's no why they thought that.
So anyway, it's not an appeal of the permit, it's just a statement that they're not in support. And the second one, which is in regard to is requesting additional information in regard to the water system that AIM owns and where that all stands in terms of what's been done for testing as well as... And we have the information in regard to what the town has done and what the town's testing does that will be provided to them.
Planning board meetings are public meetings.
Absolutely.
So anybody that had any concerns could have...
There was a public hearing.
There would have been a public...
Actually, this spanned a couple of meetings, didn't it, Jeff?
I was gonna say, they... There are three meetings, not a site visit. The planning board looked at this very carefully, did a thorough job in the review.
Is that... Is there any response going from planning board back to them?
I think they may have... They haven't seen this since they had their meeting, so I'm sure they'll make some response to it. I was just bringing it to your attention since it came to us.
As far as the... I think the second letter, they requested information on the water testing from AIM. I believe the Maine Water also tests too, and that should be public information, so it's basically the same water. So I guess they do have access to the testing of the water. Any questions on any of those from the public? If not, we're going to see, which is a police department call to Verona on November 3rd, 2016.
Yes, this was a domestic violence call that we were requested by the sheriff's office to respond to, which we did because the nearest sheriff's deputy was in Trenton at the time. The time on scene was a very short amount of time, but as we've said before, these are required to be brought to the council, so...
Thank you. Item D, Maine Municipal Risk Management Grant Award.
Yes, the fire department has gotten another award for purchasing an electric chain hoist, and the grant is in the amount of $1,422. These are safety grants available through the town's insurer for safety improvements.
Item E, Down East Transportation Ridership.
Yes, that's the local bus and taxi agreement that we have through Down East... That is available through Down East Transportation that we contribute to.
Are we advertising enough that we spend so much for a taxi on Wednesdays, I believe? It seems like the ridership of that taxi is extremely low. That's a fixed price, no matter how many people we have riding it?
That's a per day, you know, for when they're here on those days.
I wonder if we ought to...
Wait until face ridership?
If enough people out there know that that's available to them.
I'll talk to Down East and see what we're doing.
Maybe we need to put something in the ad size to let people know that that is available. It's a service that the town is providing for our citizens, and it'd be nice for them to be aware of it. Item F, Weekly Construction Summary for November 4th, 2016.
Yes, and again, this is for the week of October 31st and November 7th of what is going on onsite there. Are some sections of the new construction that are being powered up. Some of the buildings are coming, not for processing purposes, but they're going to be in the near future, right up to the beginning of the year. Some of what's being processed now is going to be processed in the new facility so that they can reconstruct the other areas. So what is really good, and I'm steel the thunder from my manager's report, is that we have a contingency that's been touched for approximately $90,000. And right now, there's still more than half a million dollars in that contingency because we have that, plus our interest that we had to pay on short-term borrowing was budgeted to be $200,000, and we only ended up spending $30,000 in short-term interest on that, 7.8. So that $170,000 also went into contingency, which if we can preserve that and save a little more, should go a long way, hopefully towards paying for the interceptor sewer line behind Hanaford that connects to the facility that is the bottleneck issue for piping, and would alleviate that, plus help with the development issues from anything above Broadway that comes down into that. And I spoke to Rural Development, who's at the meeting, who has suggested that our engineer give us some ballpark pricing to look at. The idea that if this is going to stay intact, that the town could utilize that, those funds, which are grant funds, and if you don't spend them, they're gone. But there's no... You don't reduce your loan or anything by them. But it would go a long way towards adding that on, and it could be put to bid this winter for construction in the spring, so that at the time, the whole thing opens, that interceptor would also be replaced. So... And the good part is that we're out of the ground. You know, how much more ledge, how much more, you know, but your contingency tends to get spent on things you can't see when you're trying to build something. And other than a lot of electrical stuff kind of work, we're out of the ground in terms of construction. So hopefully, we could... That would be a huge benefit of this project if we were able to resolve that big issue out of something that's an existing...
And that would, as I read it, would be behind Hanaford, not down the road, so we wouldn't be digging up the road.
No, it's all cross-country. It's all that way. So it would be... It would be an attractive project for a contractor because it isn't down the middle of the road where you have to contend with all of that other stuff. And it's on an existing easement because we... It's already there. It's in the ground. So it would be a good project. I think we'd get a lot of interest in it, and it shouldn't be terribly difficult work. As I said, it's already in the ground. So that's way more. That's part of my manager's support. But this is... If you can believe that sewer is exciting, this is exciting. Because if we're able to solve some of these problems without having to look at more bonding or borrowing or those kind of things, then this secondary treatment system that you've invested in has purchased you more than you thought you were going to get when you started.
And this is... There was one issue of change order that had something to do with interfacing the new controls or the old controls?
Yes.
And that's already paid for?
That's all out of this... This is the net, so...
Yes, sir.
Those things weren't figured in the original contract?
What things?
For instance, the bottleneck situation, she said?
No, the treatment plant itself is what was... What the EPA said had to be go from primary treatment to secondary treatment. And so all of that was what was designed and built. Getting the stuff to the plant stuff was not... They knew that that was an issue, but it wasn't a requirement of the feds to add that piece in to it. I call it a bottleneck. When there's a lot... When there's a high flow or rain or that kind, it gets more difficult. But no, because... Likely because it would have driven the cost of the project higher initially, the way it's happening is that because the cost of the project is less, that they're not using all the contingency, we didn't use very much of the short-term borrowing interest, that there's enough money remaining there. If we had had the original estimate plus this, it would have been more, a bigger loan and a longer way to go before we got to grant, so...
So we would have been financing an additional $500,000 at 28...
It would have not been anticipated that... Not every project goes that you don't use a contingency. You sometimes use that and some more, but in this case, they didn't. But I wasn't here when they did the original design, but I know that it was identified as another item that even though you did this, you'd have to do that at some point. But it was not... Because of the size of this project, it wasn't all added into a loan back then. So if we can get it done within the budget of what it was just going to cost to do the treatment facility, then you're ahead of the game. I don't...
So is it fair to say that it's basically, if it works the way you hope it would, it's free money, in a sense?
Well, you can't...
We can't give it back, and we can't...
You have to... The way it goes, you spend $550,000 in local share upfront. That's a requirement. And then you spend loan money, 7.8 million. And then the last thing that gets expended on any project is grant money. And so you don't save anything. If you can't take... If you have grant money left, you can't take it and apply it to the loan. So if you don't spend grant money, you don't...
It goes back.
It goes to somebody else or does some other thing, but it doesn't benefit you. If there's another project that you have that needs to be done, that you can fund with that grant money, rather than going out and asking your rate payers to raise more, then you're... It makes sense to do that. Now, this is all still... We're not there yet, but if we get prices and it looks reasonable, then I will, and our contingency stays whole, I'll be coming to the council to ask for permission to go to bid for a project that would do this at the beginning of next year, so that it can coincide with the opening of the thing. But that's, again, it's an attempt to address an issue that was identified but not budgeted for as part of this.
But if this contingency hadn't have been there, you would be at some point asking the taxpayers to come up with this money to do this other job.
Absolutely.
If the money hadn't have been there in the contingency.
That's correct.
It would have been users, right?
It would have been the rate users.
It would have been the rate users, not the taxpayers.
I understand that. Somebody would have been informed at some point that, well, now that we've got this, we've got to have some additional money to waste there.
I remember when it was being discussed that, you know, at times, it kind of backed up a little bit, but it was going to be fine until the town expanded a little bit more and more users came online. I think everybody thought it might be 10 or 15 years. But now, if we have the opportunity to use contingency money to do it now, it makes more sense than to wait 10 years until it gets more of a bottleneck and development takes place.
I agree.
We're kind of staying ahead of it, I guess, luckily, because of the contingency.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we cannot recast the loan, then by God...
Which in the long run, if we can do it that way, will prevent the users from having to raise more money to replace that pressure main, I believe.
The intercept, yeah.
Any other questions on that? Okay, we're going to go on to new ordinances to be considered or introduced. I don't believe we have any, do we?
No.
Okay, item seven, discussion items for managers' clarification and direction or council discussions and input on issues. The first one being finance committee update from the meeting tonight.
Yeah. We had two items on the agenda. The first one was a proposal from the town manager on the Heart and Soul program. I'll let Susan go over it, because I can't, but she could. I'll butcher it, so...
There's a resolve in your packet down further, and there was a memo to the council in regard to this, and that nearly a year ago, the council voted to support the Heart and Soul program after a presentation by a representative from the Orton Foundation, and it, at the time, indicated that it would support this staff-wise through its economic and community development director at a certain level on a weekly basis. And at that time, and that's how it has worked for the past year, but several good things have happened that have made continuing this model not workable. And one is that Heart and Soul is going to beat the band, takes a lot of time. And the second is that our economic and community development director is right out straight with the job for the town, which is more devoted to local business and interest in the redevelopment of the mill site, which is getting a considerable amount of interest in requiring his attendance at that site for visits and meetings many times a week. And so what has happened is that I am asking an employee to work an inordinate number of hours on a salaried basis with no end in sight, and that wasn't the agreement. This is the interest in redevelopment of the mill and additional business in Bucksport has happened at a rate faster than I certainly anticipated that it would. And so I met with Heart and Soul to talk to them about the town's need for the town's employee to be more... To direct more of his time back to the town, and how to help the organization, Heart and Soul, which remains very important to the community, to move forward to the completion of its work. And the group formed a reorganization committee to look at how, with some proposals on how this might work, and came back with a proposal for a coordinator with some volunteer assistants that would be paid a stipend, a weekly stipend between now and December of 2017, to do the coordination work, and that our economic and community development director would still devote time to this project in managing the financial and billing and accounting segments of what's required, which the town has, but that the coordinator would do more public outreach, reaching out to the groups in the community, get more volunteers, do those kind of things. And so I'm asking the council to use $20,000 from TIF revenues, which is our set aside for TIF funds when the mill was in place. There's approximately a half million dollars in that account right now, plus the $230,000 that was the avoided second-half TIF payment to the mill. At the time they left, we negotiated, we only paid on one TIF instead of the second one, so that that was available but not expended. And I want to stress that none of this is because nobody's doing a good job or that things are not going well. It's entirely because things are going well, and that the demand for time in two areas is now exceeds the ability of one person to do that as in a coordinator basis. So Finance met and talked about this and considered and recommended to the council approval of this as an investment in Bucksport's future because Heart and Soul is the entity that we have that's the bottom-up instead of us, which is the top-down, and that it remains very important to the community that this moves forward. We have some representatives from Heart and Soul here as well, but that's Finance. And there is a resolve later in the agenda. If anyone has any questions, I'd be able to... Happy to answer, and as other people need to.
As I mentioned in the committee meeting, it's the council's de facto rep on Heart and Soul. There's a small but incredibly dedicated group of volunteers, a couple of them here right now, and the momentum is going this way, but the number of block parties and all the other things that they're doing, this is going to keep that momentum going. And again, everybody's doing a great job, but you can't split your time too many different ways before you start to falter in one or the other, so it's a great good opportunity.
Yep. Second item we met on was zero sort recycling, and we're going to have a recommendation to the council that we go forward with a zero sort idea of basically doing that at the transfer station and all that zero sort encompasses.
Anything else? Anything from the public on either one of these issues? They're going to be taken up later in the resolves.
If memory serves me correctly, we were assured by the lady who came here and introduced Heart and Soul to us that it wouldn't be costing the community anything. It was all volunteer situation, and there possibly could be some grants. It was all volunteer situation, and there possibly could be some grants. And now I'm hearing that we're gonna drop $20,000, or it doesn't sound like much when you talk about the vast amount of money we have in the TIF fund, but $20,000 is $20,000. Again, we were assured that this wasn't going to be the case. I was at the first meeting, I'm sure of that.
Any other comments? No, we're going to item B, Streets and Roads Committee meeting. Is that you, Joe?
And that was, meeting, the discussion item was looking at the intersection of Duck Cove and Route 46, number of accidents recently there, and looking at what could be done to improve the visibility of a stop sign and other things. And Sue, if you wanna elaborate a little bit more on what you're doing and have done already?
What we did was Public Works put a new stop sign that's, that's not as high up, that's directed towards the place where you're driving, and a little closer to the road. And they also installed a sign prior to, when you get there, both reflective signs, that is a stop ahead sign, so that it gives people some, a bit more notice and higher visibility of moving forward. That's, that's our first avenue. There's the possibility also of, of doing the, the stop ahead in the roadway, so that's reflective paint as well. We haven't gone to that yet. And we also looked at the new, they won't say new, but there, there are signs that have LED lights around them, the edge, the lighted sign for a stop sign in the center, but they're extremely expensive. And so we've started with, with improved signage by reorienting and putting a new larger stop sign actually facing instead of kind of off to one side, and then a secondary sign there as well. So, we're, we've done that. Wes Garn will be evaluating it to see if there's, if it improves effectiveness.
Have we had any contact with the DOT at all?
We have, our Public Works director has attended to contact them. The, the issue is that the, the problem is our intersection, not Route 46. The people aren't coming from Route 46, they're coming from ours. So, you know, I sort of, if nothing else in the whole world, we tried a $1,600 LED light sign, which I thought was quite expensive. You know, the, the idea of a flashing light, those kind of things, those would have to be made by that town, because the state's list of dangerous intersections is thousands long, and they, if towns wish to pursue those, they can do it and pay for it, but that's the only way. But if you have an opportunity, go out and take a ride and see if you, see if that's somewhat different. People who have have said that it's, it's noticeable now, more than it was.
Anything else on the streets and roads? Going to items, any comments from the public on this one? If not, we're gonna go on to item C, ordinance committee update. Peter, is that you?
Yep. Three things. We had a review of Chapter Six. Code enforcement officer has worked hard on that to condense it a little bit, take some things away. We had some good conversation on fees, conversation on some definitions. So we are going to, they're gonna, he's gonna put in those changes and bring it forward again at our next meeting to get it ready to send up for a public hearing. Next one we talked about was sewer ordinance amendment, changing the base rate for town private water customers, sewer, town sewer and private water customers, those that, that aren't metered on the town water. Basically, we're gonna have a public hearing on that, I think, also at our next meeting, correct Sue?
It's on tonight's agenda.
Agenda is set. And basically what it does is it, it simplifies the numbering, it makes everything the same. And then the third one, we had a discussion that came from, from our last meeting about noise regulations and how we look at people that run generators sort of in an unconventional way. So, again, Sue and Jeff are gonna look some things up, try to put something together, because nobody has dealt with this. Sue has talked to the state, and they don't really have any direction on it, so we're gonna try to see what we can come up with and talk about it, and obviously if we did anything, it would be a public hearing and go forward with that, so.
Any questions? No, we're gonna go on to agenda items. Item A being to adopt resolve 2017-30 to approve pay requisition 15 for the construction of the sewer treatment facility in the amount of $719,630.26 to be paid for from grant fund, grant funds received. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
We have motion and second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, to adopt resolve 2017-31 to approve general obligation bonds in the amount of $7,800,000 with the interest rate of 1.875 and a 28-year payback through the U.S. Rural Utilities Service. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have motion and second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to vote for a candidate for Maine municipal review election.
Yes, you have a ballot in your packet.
I had a motion, vote for you.
Okay, you can do that.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second to use the town vote to vote for Susan Lasad as a candidate for the municipal review committee. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, to adopt resolve 2017-32 to utilize $20,000 from TIF revenues to provide funding for the Heart and Souls program. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have motion and second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council?
I just, have you guys, has Heart and Soul accepted any grants, or had had any grants come through yet, as Mr. Morrison was talking about?
Yeah, John brought it along. Yeah, we received two grants, one for $15,000, one for $10,000. Make sure the balance on those. And we have received, well, I'd say roughly about $1,500 in donations. So, that's, what's that, $26,500 roughly, that we've received.
Looking forward to more grants.
So, in that, well, that is one of the things that the committee put on the description of the, the job description of the new coordinator approved, and to seek opportunities for additional grants.
Any other questions?
I just have a, the, I think it's very important that we support these various coalitions and programs and foundations such as the Orton Group here. This person that is gonna move forward on this, it's important to keep things going back and forth with the Orton Foundation. And as already demonstrated, not only grants here from the Orton Foundation into the work we're doing, but also when we apply for other grants in town, it's important to have the Orton Foundation and other notable agencies like that, you know, in our, in the holster or, and so forth. So, I am heartily in favor of this moving forward on this $20,000.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item E, to adopt resolve R2017-33 to approve contracting for zero sort recycling with Casella Resource Solutions. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have motion and second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public?
Were any other companies contacted in regard to zero sort, or see if the places were any different?
The, Casella was the source here, because they're the ones regionally that has the closest point for, so no, I have not. Casella is the one that has zero sort with a facility in Old Town for consolidation that then goes, that is utilized by the communities in this region. And the, the, the prices, as indicated, are for a compactor that is maintained and owned by them, but leased by the town for use, and then a per-trip pickup as needed, and then a per-ton tipping fee in Lewiston. But for available in, in this region, Casella is the one that is, has, is, is used by all the communities that are currently doing zero sort in this area.
When I bring my trash to the dump, everything that I bring to the dump goes into this zero sort, I don't have to?
No. Zero sort is for recycling. You, from, when this program is in place, there will be no more, take your cardboard here and take your plastic here, and you can only use certain kind of, you'll have your trash, like you've always had your trash, but hopefully what your trash will be is a smaller bag. And it can be a smaller bag, because many things that you can't recycle right now, you can in zero sort. And they can all, what you, they all go in one tote or clear plastic bag, however you wanna get it to the transfer station, it can be in one container and not need to be separated into various slots. Paper, glass, cardboard.
Plastic.
Plastic, any plastic that you can, tin cans, if you can bend the plastic, it can go in your tote, laundry baskets, all this kind of stuff that then goes into, there's gonna be a, your regular hopper where the trash goes is still gonna be there, and there's gonna be a second compactor on your left inside the building, where you just dump your recyclables in and go. You no longer have to part and parcel stuff up.
What sort of fee do I pay when I come in and drop the stuff?
None.
So it's zero?
Zero sort, recycling has no cost, we're not charging for recycling, because what we're trying to do is encourage people to recycle, to get more out of their garbage and into it, because the cost of disposing of recyclables is so much less than the cost of, to the town for disposing of garbage. So the more we can encourage people by making it easier to get it out of that waste stream and get it into the other one, the better off we are. There's currently a fee for disposing of trash if you don't bring any recyclers. That, that already exists, and will continue. But the smaller you make your garbage part, and the bigger you make your recycling part, the more, communities that have switched to this tend to see their solid waste disposal amounts reduced by 20 to 30 percent. So that saves the town money from having to pay for that at the higher rate for trash.
So initially it's paying for town money, which is going to eventually save?
The people money. As we go into 2018, when we know that the world is gonna change from what it's been because of the expiration of advantageous electrical contracts at PERC, and the town has made a decision to go in a different direction, but whether it would have been PERC or it's the MRC, that tipping fee is higher. And so our goal is to start this more than a year ahead of time, so people can get into the habit of doing this. So by the time we have to do something different with our garbage that's gonna cost more, that there's less garbage to have to deal with.
How much do we think this, this difference is gonna be? We're still gonna have to send, the stuff that goes into that big hopper is still gonna have to go for a tipping fee somewhere, right?
Yes, it does. And, and because it's in a compactor, we're, if we just had an, some places use open trailers, but you don't, when you ship an open trailer, you ship a lot of air. A compactor, you can, we're shipping seven or eight tons at a time instead of four, and so you're, you're sending it less often, but, so it's more efficient in terms of getting rid of that. But yes, there is a tipping fee, it's $45 a ton right now, currently delivered in Lewiston from the Old Town Facility, and that, that is dramatically less than the $60 a ton that we're currently committed to for the disposal of solid waste at a new facility. So we're trying to, the purpose is to get people to do as much recycling as they can, which will save the town money and therefore not require increases in that transfer station budget. We're looking to bring it down, not bring it up.
So this is going to be reliant on people doing this recycling?
That's correct. And, and part of it is a, is a public education process, which if, in the packet, there's examples of what different communities have done to try and encourage people to utilize the system. Many people, if you, if you have to have five different things sitting around your house because the paper can't touch the, you can't, people are more reluctant to do that. But if you have one tote sitting by the back door and everything that's recyclable can go into it, then when you go, you have your bag of trash, and you have that, and it's, it's easy, and it's not complicated. And better yet, when you get to the transfer station, you're not out in the elements trying to put things around, you're in, inside a building, dump it and go.
And you mentioned, I believe, what was the piece of equipment of the, of the?
Well, the balers go, which are tremendously expensive to maintain and use.
Something else that would have to be replaced at some point in time, we wouldn't have to?
The skid steer. We've had the skid steer discussion, and what this will allow us to do is evaluate, the skid steers are used to pick up heavy bales of things that we won't be bailing anymore. So, the balers go, the need for something as expensive as a skid steer needs to be evaluated. That's why we've put off, if you remember, purchasing anything recently. So, I think that once we get rid of all the stuff that we don't need, and the trailers and all that kind of stuff, there's no need to replace those, there's no need to keep the balers, all of that can be sold and have a leased compactor that somebody else is responsible for fixing, if it doesn't work, and bringing us another one is a goal overall to make us more efficient at what we're doing. Yes.
Yeah, just to keep going a little bit and follow up on Mr. Morrison's question, you know, back in March when we ran all the numbers, looking at our choices back and forth, Jim, there was, it was about 1,400 tons of trash between municipal solid waste between Orland and Bucksport. Now, Orland is pursuing a different adventure, so roughly we're down to about 1,100 tons, and if, we should be able to reduce about 20 percent, which would knock off about 220 tons at a reduced tipping rate. And like the town manager explained, we already have the building, we already have the power, the current balers will be taken out of service, the new compactor will be put in that building, which also means that a few months ago, there was discussion about, the former director of Public Works wanted to put up a building which was gonna cost us $180,000. That will now be taken off the table. The kid steer will be reviewed whether we need it or not. And also the trailers, which were reported in not good shape, those will be taken out of the equation too, we won't need any of that. So, it, it, and, and just the preliminary numbers, the cost for the year, town manager and I ran separate numbers, independent, we didn't collaborate or check on it, and we discussed them tonight. It looks to be about an $18,000. We both came up to the exact penny of $18,000 for the year. To lease the compactor is only $400 a month, and that includes all the maintenance and so forth. We own our own trash trailers now. We do not have to get in the trash trailer market, that's all by Casella. It's, 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 I think we've fallen out of the Christmas tree on this one, it's a good deal.
And environmentally, you know, I, I've talked to people in the past that have, that indicate that recycling is, can be an environmental issue in itself, but is it, is it a good message for the town to be doing this? It seems like it would be a good message that we're trying to recycle.
We're already doing it, we already come back.
We recycle.
Well, we're already doing it, we already come back from that paper, you know, the dumpster for the cans goes away.
But we're doing it in a way that's not easy for, as easy for our residents to comply with, and it's more labor intensive for us. There are other things that personnel can be doing that are more resident focused than running a baler.
Yeah, but I guess what I mean is, is fewer things will go into the, the hopper.
Yes.
That shouldn't go into the hopper.
Basically, we're going to be better stewards of the land.
Yeah.
And not only that, the recycle market dropped off to, I don't even know if we even get rid of glass anymore.
But you can't, no. There are things that you can now, would be able, all grades of plastic plus glass, paper, all of those kinds of-
So the key is to get that out of the regular trash that goes to MRC.
Exactly, reduce our-
And, and at a reduced rate.
Yep, exactly.
At a rate which fluctuates. I spoke with a, a member of the committee, Solid Waste Committee of another town, and he said that it does work out great sometimes, but at other times you definitely shut up.
Yeah, we used to do really well when we first started recycling. And then everybody started doing it, and the price for your products went, went into the basement.
Our recyclables have generally, when there was a big market, went overseas. They went to the Far East primarily and, and were used there. And, and that market dropped off dramatically when some of the markets and parties had issues, and they had not rebounded to where they were.
But back in March, when we ran all those initial numbers, it was $55 a ton for zero sort, and here we are at 45.
So it is-
And, and so with commodities being rock bottom right now, if the prices go back up, the potential exists for that tip fee to potentially go lower.
Now, we have, we have a motion and a second, right? Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item F to adopt resolve R. 2017-34 to approve the use of street and roads reserve funds for a binder coat of pavement for the eight-lot extension at Heritage Park. Susan?
Okay. The eight-lot extension at Heritage Park, we, we got it, the water is in, the, the work that the crew is in, and we are at the point where we can put binder coat of pavement on this, which I would like to do in this season to preserve the work that's been done on the surface of it thus far before winter. And we were able to, if you remember, when we got our paving price this year, we had the price of $60 a ton from Thibodeau, which I think was the best paving price I heard from anywhere. And I asked our public works director to contact Thibodeau to see if they would hold that price for us, give us that price to, in this season, do that, the remainder of that road, and, which is approximately 380 tons. And they agreed that they would hold that $60 price if we wanted to do it. And apart from saving the thing, I doubt we're going to get that price again, because all of our other bids, if you remember at the time, were $67, $68 a ton. So I'm asking to take money from Streets and Roads to do that binder coat at $60 a ton from Thibodeau, that, the total cost is approximately $24,000.
Motion approved. Second? We have motion and a second, uh, seconded, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I have a question and a comment at the Economic Development Committee meeting. Not too long ago, the, we had another vendor, local vendor in, and he said the product right now is the lowest that he's, has seen it in many, many years. So to the town manager's point, the question I have about doing the binder coat, I drove, road is very drivable today, and it makes sense to put that binder coat down. The, the question becomes, does it make sense to even put the final coat on at this time with all the work that was done and the amount of driving over all the gravel that was installed? And, you know, in 2014, we had a lot of inches of snow on the ground at this time, and we've still got decent weather ahead. So is it just the binder? I'm, I'm not used to the state of Maine and how to do the roads, whether you want to leave the gravel, put the binder coat on and see what happens over the winter? Or would it make sense to have them do the final coat at this time with the product being as low as it is?
The, the binder coat can be put down in temperatures that are lower than, on gravel, temperatures lower than you can put pavement on pavement.
Okay.
And so this is, the binder is, is the gravel, and that can go down-
So really at the end of the season?
But, but it would then have to cure some before you did that, and, and then you're not going to get, because I'm assuming that it's not going to be 60 degrees for the rest of November, but-
It was, it was strictly based on the cost of the product being as low as it is.
No, I, absolutely. But the, the practical application would be that it would probably not end up being as good an investment because it wouldn't-
Okay.
I, I think it's important to get the binder down-
Oh, I totally agree. I want to do both, just from a financial-
And also I talked to Susan today that maybe after we put the binder down, we put some type of barricade up there so people aren't driving in there on the binder and let it settle before we put the-
Yeah. I have to tell you, it came out very, very well. I mean, there's a height right down at the very end of it too, and yeah, they did a very nice job.
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second, right?
The, the people that ran the lines, are they going to be one of the vendors that are going to bid for the pavement, or who gives?
The pavement was a bid that we, we contracted our paving with Von Thibodeau.
Oh, so they're going to provide the pavement and the service?
The, and they did all our other paving this year, it's all done. And so just to see if we could get the same rate without-
Yeah, we competitive bid the paving at the time.
We can, we had done that out, so I called to see-
So what was the total cost again?
$24,337.
Okay.
It's 380 tons.
And, and from the last manager, I would, we, I was under the impression that the binder by the modeling school's been there for a while, it has just binder on it, so as far as paving it, putting the final coat wouldn't be as essential to do it right afterwards? Is that what?
It, it's not essential to do it right afterwards, but-
Yeah, okay.
Depending on the kind of traffic that you're anticipating, or something, before it was going to be really heavy traffic, I would think you would want to have your final coat.
Like they say, the buses and everything.
Yeah. I don't, I'm not sure.
So if we barricade it, then we wouldn't plow it and we wouldn't worry about tearing up all that binder we put in.
Yeah. Yeah. And you wouldn't have people up there-
There's, there's no-
Hustling around and-
These services anyway, there's no, so.
Drag racing on it, or whatever, you know. Okay, we have a motion and a seconded. Anything further from the council? I've already asked input from the public. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're going on to item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. And we have one November 8, 2016, election results.
And that is just that here locally, we had a great turnout. I think Kathy said 70, what was the?
No, it was 66 percent.
Yeah. It was a very high percentage turnout. We had three great candidates. Mayor Keen and Councilor Carmichael were reelected, but we had a very strong showing from Mr. Morrison as a candidate, which is great. Lots of public involvement, and so we move on from here. We have more elections next year.
Do you have a final number on how many new registration, registered voters?
234.
Wow. That's amazing. Okay, we'll go on to item 10.
That was just Election Day, I had a lot prior to that.
Oh, wow. Wow.
I had 300 voters cards and I ran out of that time or anything to register new voters in less than two weeks.
Wow. Great, people getting involved. All right, item 10, approve quick claim, uh, quick claims discharge of deeds, first one being Rachel Locke, real estate quick claim deed on map 42, lot 38. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
We have motion and a second, approve the quick claim deed for Rachel Locke. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, Craig and Corinne Bowden, real estate quick claim deed, map 9, lot 44, mobile home. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, approve the quick claim deed. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, Christopher and Erica Clayton, sewer quick claim deed, map 32, lot 46. How would the council like to proceed?
Move.
We have motion and a second, approve the quick claim, uh, sewer quick claim deed. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're going to go on to item 11, town managers' report and department head reports.
I have one. The mayor, economic development director, and I attended a meeting with Senator Angus King this past week that was a discussion of what Bucksport is working on in terms of its economic future, as well as a tour of the AIM site that is being deconstructed. And the senator indicated his willingness to assist in any way possible as the community moves forward. I might add that the, the AIM tour, once you get past the front from the, it's amazing in terms of what's come down, but what's even more amazing is the amount of, of that material that they had planned to put in the landfill is tremendously reduced by the fact that they're separating rebar, et cetera, from the concrete that will then be crushed to use as a fill in some areas on the site. So that's, that's moving along well. And, and to echo the mayor, I want to thank Kathy and her crew of election workers for a very well-run election, because the work of the election started many months ago for Kathy, and she has, as always, done an amazing job of bringing it all together. It is a testament to her organizational abilities and her willingness to always go the extra mile, that all of the appropriate i's were dotted and t's were crossed to ensure not only that the town was in compliance with all regulations, but that the voting residents of Bucksport had ample opportunity to cast their ballots, both at the polls and as part of the absentee process. And I also want to thank the front office staff who, who stepped up while Kathy was otherwise occupied in this for a very long time, so they all did a great job. I had the pleasure today of attending a Veterans Day presentation at the Jewett School, where the children were given some background information on Veterans Day. They did the pledge of allegiance, they watched a flag-holding demonstration, and had the opportunity to meet a number of veterans, as well as for individuals who are currently serving in the military. It was a heartwarming experience. I encourage everyone to take a minute and thank any member of the military, current or not, that they encounter, not just on Veterans Day, but year-round. These children were so excited. It was a great, great event that was put on for them. I did an interview with Channel 7 on Monday, the 7th, which was very, like, this big, but they called for an update on how the town was doing after almost two years out from the mill closure. I already talked about the sewer. The Baker Daily News did an article following the Senator King visit that talked a bit about what was happening in Bucksport. And I made the mistake of reading the online comments after that article. And there were a number that were highly critical and dismissive comments about what this community is doing. And it's because the, the article only touched on a few topics. And in an effort to provide a more comprehensive update for people, I'm doing an op-ed piece that I plan on submitting so that people can understand just how much the people of this community are doing for the future of their community. And when I say the people of this community, I don't just mean the people who work for the community, I mean the people of the community who are stepping up in so many ways. And apart from not wanting to read online comments, I should know better. I think it's important that people understand just how special that is, how different that is from many places. And so I will be submitting that on behalf of the town. That's the end of my comments.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from anybody? Okay, we'll go on to item 12, set public hearings and hold public hearings and approval of any licenses or permits. First one being, public hearing shall and ordinance be adopted, title amendment to the Bucksport Town Code, Appendix K, land use ordinance. Are we going to set that for?
That's now. That's, we're holding it right now.
Hold now. Declare the public hearing open. Peter, you want to give any rundown on this?
Well, it's been a while in the works, it's finally coming, go ahead. Go ahead, Joe. Give you a summary of what these changes are. This is a proposed change to the town's land use ordinance, which is Appendix K of the Bucksport Town Code. It affects four sections of the ordinance, sections 10, 13, 16, and 20. In section 10, it pertains to changes of use, and the proposed changes essentially provides the first of reviewing authority of any application that comes into town, created flexibility to determine what level of review is needed for that application, if any at all. Section 16, excuse me, section 13 proposes to change one, one section, a simple, a simple change really, that pertains to parking for uses in existing buildings. Right now, the ordinance says if you change your use of an existing building on Main Street, you don't have to provide, you don't have any public parking satisfies, whatever parking requirements you need. That only applies to existing buildings though. So this change will change that to apply to any use of a, of a lot on Main Street, whether it's new or existing. Section 16 is the non-conformant section, and the change there adds language that DEP is looking for, and that language requires the planning board to conduct a review to make certain that a change of a non-conforming use is consistent with shoreline zoning requirements, if it's in the shoreline zone. And then a change in section 20 just makes a couple of minor, minor modifications of two definitions, expansion of a structure, replaces reference to floor area or volume with reference to footprint or vertical addition. So if you're adding, if you're expanding a building laterally or vertically, that's considered an expansion of a structure. And then a similar change is made to expansion of the land use, reference to the expansion of a footprint as well as floor area. So those are essentially the, the changes that are proposed. The planning board, oh, by the way, at your last meeting, I mistakenly told you that the planning board had held their public hearing and had recommended approval. I was thinking of their first reading of this ordinance in which they had no comments at all on it. They, I assumed that they were perfectly fine with the, all the proposed changes. They held their public hearing at the, this month's meeting on November 4th, and the outcome was surprising to me. They actually recommended that the change to section 13, 15, 8.7, which is the one I just talked about, about public parking, not be approved. The remaining changes, they did, and by the way, that, that recommendation not to approve was unanimous, which is even more surprising to me. The remaining changes, they recommended that they be approved, the vote was six to one.
Thank you. Yeah, what was the rationale on 13, 15, 8.7?
Well, the, the planning board has not asked me to speak for them, but my impression, listening to the discussion, was that they, they were uncomfortable with being, being possibly put in a position where they may have to look at a land used that has high parking demands and not be able to require them to provide their own parking because of the provision that says public parking satisfies the needs of any use on a lot on Main Street. They were uncomfortable with the language that exists now, but they have not been vocal about it until now.
Again, we, we have the final say, right?
Exactly.
Right. On, on that topic- Um, on, on that topic, uh, I think we had talked about this and, and basically sent it to the planning board on that parking issue, uh, just basically to get their opinion on it. Uh, but I think the council basically said, you know, we wanted that language changed because in most downtown areas, if you have a building that is rundown or dilapidated or whatever, or somebody wants to put another building on, same-sized building, same footprint and everything, um, they would, they would have to have onsite parking. Uh, but if it was, if they kept the existing building, even if it cost them more to refurbish it than putting a new one on, they wouldn't need onsite parking. Uh, at least I felt that that was unreasonable, that's why we have public parking. Uh, I don't think there's a building in town that would be able to be removed and something else put on, same size and everything on that lot, and meet that onsite parking requirement. Um, I, I think that's why, I believe that's why the council basically looked to change that, uh, ordinance on that. But again, this is a public hearing, uh, it's open to the public for comments on that issue, or any of the issues. Feel free to speak. If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
I just got one, one question for Jeff. Now, was your recommendation to change that thirteen to the language that you had suggested prior to the planning board decision, as far as right now? You, you agree with changing it so that public parking is acceptable? Is that true, or are you?
For both existing and new and, and existing uses on Main Street.
Yes.
That, that would be the change, where the provision now says it only applies to existing buildings.
Right.
And their, their recommendation was to not, not change it? Or they just didn't have a comment?
They didn't, they didn't like it either way.
Exactly. I, I think that, that's what it boils down to, the change really is not gonna resolve their concern, whether you, whether you approve it or not, the concern is still gonna be there. Uh, perhaps, perhaps there might be, uh, a need for some discussion at some point in time to talk about, uh, what, if anything, should be looked at in terms of uses that are allowed on Main Street, in regards to, uh, the potential for some use to come along someday that has a high parking need. There are some uses in our land, land use tables that might possibly have high parking needs, but, you know, they're, they're allowed to occupy a lot on Main Street right now. Maybe we should talk about, uh, whether or not we should limit that to eliminate the risk of a business coming in that has a high parking needs. And it could be as little as ten, ten parking spaces. You might have a business with ten employees needing ten, ten parking spaces. That might be just enough to present, uh, an adverse impact on the parking needs of other businesses that are on Main Street right now. I mean, it might be as little as that, it might, might take more than that, I, I don't know, but there are some uses, uh, that are allowed right now on Main Street that might have high parking needs.
And right now, they could go into any existing building and not have to worry about it.
Right. Exactly, yes.
So, if, the playing field is leveled, one way or another, either everybody can or nobody can, I guess is my.
That's, I'm pretty sure that's the way we wanted to look at it, was.
Is that, is that, given the current condition, which is, and what precipitated this for people who weren't, haven't been part of it, is a developer interested in a building on Main Street that, um, is in really bad condition, and which talked about taking the building down and putting another one up on that, and in doing that, they would have to provide onsite parking, which is not possible to do. And so, the question is whether the community wants to see this dilapidated structure stay there as a dilapidated structure, or see a newer structure that follows the same constraints that the old one would've had to. So, that, that's where we started with this discussion, was in the downtown area, that was.
And there are, there are a lot of lots on Main Street, especially on the shore side, that are essentially filled with the buildings that sit on it.
That's right.
No possibility whatsoever of having parking available on those lots. Maybe the solution is to not require off-street parking, um, lots on Main Street. And that's another, another way to look at it, but we're doing the same thing essentially with what we have now, but we still have that park requirement in the ordinance, that every land use is obligated to provide their own parking, with some exceptions elsewhere, not, not on Main Street.
Yes, sir.
This is not to speak necessarily in favor or against that, it's more of a, an observation I have, that the town's made significant investment over the years in, in public parking. And, um, it's my opinion that it's way underutilized, maybe because we don't have, you know, the, the business that we intend to eventually have, but, but I think, um, that whether it's the council, or, uh, different committees, or, or a, a public, um, initiative, I, I feel that we, we need to come up with a way that these parking lots we have are better utilized. Um, I use the example of, uh, when the mill was running, um, people had to park in a, in a parking spot, maybe a quarter mile they had to walk to work, maybe even further than that. It was no big deal. It might be cold in the winter, but people did it. Um, I, I think we ought to encourage businesses on Main Street, that the employees park in some of these off, you know, off-Main Street parking lots that we have, and walk to work. Um, and that would free up more spaces for, for the customers that utilize their businesses, so.
Any other comments before I close the public hearing? Okay, the public hearing closed. Are we acting on this? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second approve the, uh, amendment to the Bucksport Town Code, Appendix K, land use ordinances. We have a motion and seconded. Anything further from the council?
And again, that was the way that he had written.
The way we brought it from the committee.
Yep.
We brought it to the committee, not.
Right, right.
The way it's written in the.
Right, right. Okay, we've already had the public hearing, so, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, to set a public hearing date to consider amendment of the Town Code, Chapter Nine, Section Nine, uh, dash, one, one, oh.
What did that item, I was to take up the license?
Yep, I was gonna do that right after this. Licenses of the, I was gonna set the next public hearing, then do the license, is that okay, or?
Okay.
Set a public hearing, uh, date for, uh, Chapter Nine, Section Nine, uh, through eleven, oh, three, two, four, uh, two and four, to modify sewer rates for non-meded residents and properties. And we're gonna set that for December eighth.
I think that's, there's not.
December eighth, did you say?
Yeah, December eighth. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, uh, next one is to licenses. We have a business license for the town of Bucksport. It's the, uh, event is going to be the Main Street, or Main, oh, the events, the location is from Main Street, uh, the town office. Christmas light parade for five P.M., December tenth, two thousand sixteen.
This is from changes in that. Open up this, based on the town. It's been changed to, the group will be the same as the bank festival, start at the mill, not just Main Street.
Okay.
There's a memo in the packet.
This is a, a new event to coincide with the arrival of Santa Claus at, at one o'clock in town, and also, uh, at the book stacks, they'll have a reading for, uh, young kids, and I believe they're also trying to get a Christmas movie sometime around three o'clock at the Alamo Theater, and then, when the kids, or whoever attends the movie, comes out around five o'clock, there'd be a parade of lights, and we're asking for anybody who wants to participate in that, to, you know, decorate a float or truck with lights or whatever they want, and it will be, uh, like a light parade going through the community, uh, basically to kick off the holiday season. Mr. Grindel, do you have anything else to add on that?
Nope. Everyone's out to watch, it should be good.
This, this is the first time, so, uh, we'll see how it all goes. So, how would the council, do we, we have to have a motion? We have a motion and second approve the, uh, I guess it's called a business license application? Okay? Anything further from the public on this? It might be fun. Anything from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item thirteen is discussion items not on the agenda for the council or public. We'll open it up to the public first, have any discussion items? Yes, sir.
Hello, the last time I spoke, I gave you an update of the economic development, um, what I had been doing for the month, and it was quite a bit, so, I didn't actually give it to you in writing, so I have that for you right here. On the first page, um, you'll also see the wording that I worked on with WLBZ for the first video that has been shot. Um, it's not completed yet, but I did want you to see the wording.
Have they done the shoot, though?
Yes, the shoot, the shoot has been done. We worked to make sure the verbiage was right, um, and we're piecing it all together, in hopes to have it completed by the fifteenth. I also wanted to, uh, thank all of our veterans for their service to our country, um, and I wanted to give you an update on what's been going on with, um, my department since November first. Um, I was able to attend the main digital government summit on November first, that was held in Augusta. Uh, I attended an event in Bangor on municipalities switching streetlights to LED for cost savings. I was able to collect a thumb drive of that, and we'll be able to provide you a summary on that shortly. That meeting was held yesterday. Uh, today, I had the honor of accepting the Down East Acadia Regional Tourism, two thousand sixteen Innovation and Creativity Award, presented to Wednesday on Main, that was down at, went to Harbor. Today, I'm at the Bucksport High School, eighth through twelfth graders had the opportunity to take part in a community service fair, which had over ten groups, who were looking for volunteers for their organizations. I'd like to thank Great Pond Mountain Trust and Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce and Bucksport High School for setting up this great event. A special thank you to George McLeod and McLeod's Restaurant for providing refreshments after the event. As the town manager mentioned, there was a Veterans Day celebration today, which took place at the Jewett School and, uh, Miles Lane Schools, where veterans interacted with our students with the flag ceremony, uh, they had lunch and other events throughout the day. A special thank you for this event goes out to Adele Brazinus, Terry Orca, RSU twenty-five PTO, and Camden National Bank. Uh, the signs are up, and staff is in at State Farm Insurance Agency, uh, they are located in the Lewis Imam Building, they're on the left-hand side. Lead Better Superstore is progressing really quickly, as today the shell signs were installed on the canopy that will soon cover the gas pumps. The town manager, the mayor, myself, had the opportunity to meet with Senator King last Friday. We had productive meeting and a tour of the AIM property. For the public to know, Economic Development Committee meetings have changed to the first Thursday of the month. They still begin at five P.M., and they will be held back here in the council chambers. Heart and Soul will be hosting its last block party on Sunday, November thirteenth, from four P.M. to six P.M. That'll be at the Erie Center on Route Fifteen. The decorating committee will be looking for volunteers this Sunday, November thirteenth, beginning at nine A.M. at the ice rink to put the Christmas trees and buckets. We'll be stringing the lights and decorating downtown on Saturday, November nineteenth, at eight A.M., meeting at the Chamber of Commerce Building. Official lighting ceremony, where all lights are turned on, will be Saturday, November twenty-sixth, and that'll take place at five P.M. And as mentioned earlier, a parade of lights will be held Saturday, December tenth, at five P.M., beginning at the former Mill Parking Lot, headed down Main Street. Judging will be in front of the town office, and the route will end at the traffic lot. You'll see more about the parades upon the license request, but you took that before me. Main Street Bucksport also has some events planned for this winter. There will be no pop-up shops, as determined before, as there is no room for the businesses to pop up. On Saturday, November twenty-sixth, at ten A.M., there will be a ribbon cutting on Main Street to kick off Small Business Saturday and the Think Local First campaign. On Thursday, December eighth, from five to eight P.M., local shops and restaurants will feature free live music and stay open late for holiday shopping, so please spend the evening downtown Bucksport and enjoy some live music and holiday cheer. On Saturday, December tenth, Santa will arrive at Bookstax, accompanied by the Bucksport Fire Department. And on Friday, December sixteenth, from five to seven, Main Street Bucksport will host a holiday party. Thanks to a generous grant from the Hancock County Fund, or the Maine Community Foundation, will host our second fundraiser of the year. Special holiday-themed drinks, live music, delicious food, and plenty of holiday cheer to celebrate with your friends and neighbors. This location is still to be announced. On Sunday, December eighteenth, from one to three, volunteers will be at the Heart and Soul Building to wrap your gifts. We'll have gorgeous wrapping papers, bows, and special decorations, all you have to do is bring in your unwrapped gifts. Drop off your gifts and pick them up later in the afternoon, or stay and enjoy cookies, hot cocoa, and holiday music. This event is free. I am done. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just wonder, Tom, and on the, uh, the fair at, at the high school today, Heart and Soul had a booth there, and, um, was staffed by three of the volunteers at Heart and Soul, and they got forty-two students, uh, sign up to volunteer at Heart and Soul now. Whether they're all forty-two or eventually, uh, participate or not, uh, but that's, that was real encouraging.
Any other discussion items from the public?
What, what things were discussed with Senator King when he was here? You said that you met with him, and he offered any help that he could. Did you give him any input, things that you think we do need help from, uh, or anything like that? Did you?
We, we talked about, first, it was a history, what have you been doing, and second, where are you going, which was the tour of the mill discussion. Assistance with broadband beyond our initial grant was discussed. Brownfield money was discussed for that site, if necessary, during our, um, our, the redevelopment. The discussion of, of the port of Bucksport becoming more of a port in terms of shipping was, was discussed. His input and his assistance would be through, um, contact and support through federal agencies, if necessary, in that respect. I talked about, and what kind of incentives the town could provide, should Maine Maritime wanna come here in a way that, that, um, might be workable. It was a, primarily a follow-up dialogue from the, the visit that the federal agencies had. Their feedback to him, um, related much to the brownfields discussion, and to the idea of, of a port and an intermodal facility because of rail and water and those kind of things here. But, the, um, ability to find funding through some of federal agencies for some project would be, um, a possibility, probably less of a possibility due to the election results right now in terms of influence, but, but certainly, um, as a, as a means for the town to have, uh, some assistance voice-wise at the federal level for anything that we're looking to do that would come through economic development of those sources.
Were there any things in particular you pointed out that, uh, maybe we could start working on now, or?
Well, the, the start look, working on now, clearly, is that it's chicken and egg here at the moment, because depending on what type of business wants to locate will dictate how much or how little brownfield redevelopment has to be done, because if, if concrete pads don't have to be moved, and things don't have to be moved around, you don't have to do, it's when you start to disturb things. So, determining that, um, the, the immediate thing was I, I asked specifically if there was anything you could do to encourage Maine Maritime to come this way, or to look at their, at solidifying that. I, I mean, certainly, we are in contact with them, but, um, asking for another voice to assist is, is, doesn't hurt either. But brownfields, that redevelopment, um, and then contact through transportation for, um, the idea of assistance at the federal level for funding, if the town were to look at port development, through its own port authority. development through its own port authority, rather than being a part of the state's strategy. So, those were a few of the things that were discussed.
I, I, I think also something that he was interested in is, is the mindset of the community. Are we still in the, you know, the pity mode, poor us, poor us, or have we moved on from that? He was really amazed at all the assets that we have here, especially the broadband, that he wasn't aware of that, and all the three-ring binder issue. But the fact that, you know, the town has moved on, there's a lot of energy here, we're ready for redevelopment, we're, we're trying to be a participant in that redevelopment. And I think he was very encouraged by that, that, you know, we're, we're not still living in the past, we're ready to move on. The site's coming down, and there's a lot of energy to move on, and I think he was, he was pretty impressed with that, I thought, my take on it.
Was there any mention about the fact that we're being isolated more and more every year by the road structure in this area, that we're, we're getting further and further away from the mainstream, or anything?
No, we didn't get into any details of that. Other than the fact that we did mention, we're about 18 miles away from the major interstate system, you know? So, I don't...
And that's getting it further and further away from us, I mean, you know, it should be evident that somebody in his position that that's the case.
But he was very instrumental in the redevelopment of the Naval Air Station in Brunswick, because he, he lives in the Brunswick area, and, you know, he sees very, a lot of similarities with us, that we're ready to move on. We've got a, a huge site, has the potential for redevelopment, so I, I thought it was a good meeting. First time I'd ever met the gentleman, and...
Is any of this information going to be available in public, what went on at meetings, what he discussed?
Yeah, I think Dawn had an article in the Enterprise that covered most of it. It wasn't a lot of detail to it, it was basically just get acquainted, where he learned a little bit more about Bucksport and the potential we have here. I'm sure there's gonna be some type of follow-up in the, in the near future, because...
That was gonna be my, my first question, I've got a couple things here, is there any kind of a follow-up plan?
I guess the main thing is the channel of communication has been opened up now, you know? We're, we're on his radar map, and, and we'll see where it goes. Yes, sir.
You all set, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Question I had was, you know, we, in the council, at different council meetings, we had discussed the Public Utility Commission and Transmission and Distribution outside the power island and the fence line and so forth, that that subject come up with them, and...
Yeah, it did.
Comes up every time he sits in the room.
Every time, every time the mayor sits in the room, yeah.
As far as, you know, if, if AIM decided to lease lots on their property, the people could get the, the power directly off, off the power plant without paying the T and D charge, but if it goes across property lines, that's a different issue. I asked him that, that any way we could push legislation to create distribution-free zones around power plants, you know, within like a half a mile, where you could go across the property line and get the power, you know? And basically, the comment was lucky, good luck trying to get that through the legislation, you know?
But, but right now, you're saying if they were to lease a piece, then...
Yes, and anybody who locates on their property, they leased land from AIM, they can get power from the power plant without paying the T and D charge. They would run power, power lines directly from the power plant to that industrial facility. But if the people bought the land, they wouldn't be able to do it, even if, even if they bought a 10-acre lot in the middle of the property, they wouldn't be able to get power from that, because it'd be going across property lines.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Talking with Senator Estre, he saw a potential for getting around some of what you're talking about, particularly if the town was involved, and particularly if your expansion is on this side, the riverside of rural road, as such as the coal park, and, and on the site itself. If the town had to play a role in the rights of way and other issues, that can be worked out with AIM and their purchasers in order to get around some of those regulations. What those regulations that AIM are doing is not letting you get into the power business and distribution business, but it is to everybody's advantage to get that generator producing more power, that they can sell, I think, selling of that property, and the coal park, it's to everybody's advantage. We also talked about Wilson Hall, that's a small part of everything, he sees a potential that would seem to be a reason for his being closed, so I was pleased to hear that. He indeed was very encouraging what's going on here. He likes the idea of multiple uses, like the, out of his neighborhood, the neighborhood estate. What, what really needs to happen is some kind of a comprehensive plan that everybody can behind and look at, because this fight, this fight, this fight, he's not gonna tell the town what to do, but it can be very helpful for him and for others to be able to say, look at the plan the town has, let's stick behind parts A, B, D, and not too happy about C, that's important. And I was quite surprised that he had much, he gained a lot from AIM, because he really didn't know just what that site has to offer.
I, I think the main thing is starting the dialogue with people, you know?
He also has contacts with the outfit that is bringing cargo in to Portland from drinking and, and he talked about that. There's also some of these same contacts going to Northern Europe, particularly Scandinavia, and these are ships that are moving cargo that is small, same-sized containers, but fuel containers on the ship, because the new container ships, you can't even bring to AIM, there's no place to offload something that big, but if it can get onto the bridge, it can be offloaded here. And we talked about the $18 million that's needed to upgrade the railway, and that's been announced for...
Any other, any other comments? You heard something else?
Yeah, totally different, well, sort of related. The, I think it was back in, in June timeframe, when Mr. McGlynn came in for AIM, and did a pretty nice presentation up here on Main Street. I consider you guys have been pretty lucky to go around with Angus King, Senator King, the other day, and like Sue said, you know, it's kind of amazing if, is there any possibility that we could get Jeff back in to, maybe with some pictures or presentation or, or something to have Mr. McGlynn, you know, give us a, an update? I mean, we can't walk onsite, all we can see is hundreds of railcars out here in the way to...
Paul, I apologize, I didn't give Mr. McGlynn enough leeway to get here tonight, he actually left this evening, but it was the intent to have him actually here for this meeting, so I've been in talks with him to have him here in the December 8th meeting for you.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Yes.
And then, the last thing I had was, again, back in May, June timeframe, comprehensive plan, at that time, oh, just three, four months away from completing this, and town manager, correct me if I misspeak, but we've already had one opportunity for a grant, but the comprehensive plan wasn't complete and ready, and what was substituted in its place was the ad hoc groups, Economic Development Ad Hoc Group, and the document that the town manager critiqued, and that was an acceptable document, so we get an update pretty soon as to where the comprehensive plan is. It's already been two years in the making, from my understanding, I think it hopefully will be drawing to a close.
Okay, I will get an update for your...
Any other discussion items?
Jeff, do you have an update on the house up there on Buck Street, where the gentleman was in, and he thought he might have purchased a chance to buy it or something?
Yes, he owns that building now, and he's making repairs to it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion items?
People are, my foreclosure list is getting shorter. You might, you keep looking at things, these deeds, it's getting smaller. With upcoming, and say please sell things.
We gotta set up a...
Gonna set up a couple committees.
Yeah, waterfront committee meeting?
Yes.
Any, any idea when you want to do that?
Looks like December 8th is a pretty popular day.
Well, I was actually gonna make a, a suggestion, whether we wanted to put one of these on the 30th, if we've got a couple coming up, you know? I know we told these folks here earlier on the 8th, the ordinance one, but the waterfront one, I've got no problem doing on the 30th if you wanted to, just so we don't have a bunch of stuff stacked up.
Well, in December, I thought the last time we said in November and December, we just have one town council.
December would be the 22nd, would be the...
I was just, I was just, I was just suggesting the committee meeting, in and out.
So, so what day, Peter, are you going to?
December 33rd.
November 30th.
November 30th, the last Thursday of the month.
Realizing there's no council meeting, but just instead of stacking everything up on the 8th, because...
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why there's no council meeting. Last Thursday is Thanksgiving, the 24th.
November only has 30 days, never mind, disregard.
All right, I'm doing on the 8th.
Sure.
But what else do you need on the 8th?
What other committee would need to...
We had ordinance that we will do, right, with the generator thing?
The sewer.
And we're gonna do the, that's a public hearing.
That's a public hearing, yeah.
So, you just have the one, right?
We'll do the waterfront and the ordinance.
For that, just for that generator thing?
If that's it.
How about 5:30 and 6:00? 5:30 for ordinance, 6:00 for...
All right. We all set?
Yeah, 5:30 for ordinance, 6:00 for waterfront.
Let's go on to item 15.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'm just bearing what the town manager said.
Do we have a second for adjournment?
Second.
Motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Stay with us.
Opposed, motion passes.